Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening and welcome, and also good evening to the folks at home, since this is going to be live televised. Citizens Advisory Committee Sounding Board was organized a couple of years ago when I became a clerk. I thought it would be a good idea to have a dialogue between the taxpayers and elected officials, such as me. And we put this committee together. It started out with 40 people or so. Every two, three months, we try to pick a subject that is important to our taxpayers. For instance, one subject was code enforcement. The last one was everything you need to know about elections. And because of the phone calls that my office started receiving, I thought it would be a good idea to discuss water rates issues. How many of you think that water rates are too high, let's say? Mr. Nightingale, you're welcome. There's trustees back there, Mr. Nightingale. And the motto for this committee is problem plus idea equals solutions. And hopefully today's meeting will discuss the problem. Hopefully, some ideas will come to mind, and hopefully, we'll come up with some solutions together. One person does not have all the answers, and I sure don't. But what I'm going to do tonight is present some facts, sobering facts, that will probably open up your eyes a little bit more and possibly give you some more bad news. And we need to decide how to deal with that bad news. This is informational townhome meeting, and the purpose is to expose the truth about what is going on with water and sewage rates, and to come up with a solution, how to free ourselves from this unjust Detroit Water and Sewer Monopoly. Let me start out with some facts. Currently, there are 4 million customers in 26 communities that get water from Detroit. Eighty percent of the revenues, though, however, generated comes from suburbs. Think about it, 80%. Twenty percent comes from the city of Detroit. Detroit Water and Sewer Department is $6 billion in debt. Billion. And 800 million in bond costs that have to be paid off in the sale. Eight hundred thousand, 800 million. So it's 6 billion and 100 million. The department needs $1.5 billion in capital improvement in the next four years. That's 1.5 billion. Just a little background, how did we get to this point? My feeling is that years of neglect, cronies, mismanagement, and greed in Detroit Water Department has caused high water rates with large annual increases for us and with no end in sight. Things, however, are starting to improve a little bit with the appointment of new Detroit Water Sewer Director, Sue McCormick, who is bringing new vision and new directions to the department. And also, Macomb County officials, including County Executive Mark Heckel, Public Works Commissioner Anthony Morocco, Macomb County Board of Commissioners, and Oakland County officials as well, together with Brooks Patterson, County Executive of Oakland County, are working very hard on our behalf, representing interests of the suburbs. The Department of Water and Sewer is an old neglected water system. At one point, it employed over 4,000 people. The workforce has shrunk from 1,973 to 1,670 employees from September 2012 to present. The workforce is expected to shrink to 375 people by 2017, and this is exactly what the department needs. You do the math. There's 1,300 people there on payroll. They need to let go. They need to be, they need to go. And yet, they still going to be hanging around for two more years, for three more years, because there's nothing can be done about them. The unions will not let them go. We should not make this issue, however, suburbs against Detroit. I want to make this very clear. We are in this mess together. However, now, we must demand fairness and seat at the table so we can have an input and a voice. I would also like to make very clear, I have nothing against Emergency Manager Kevin Orr. He has a very difficult task force of him, and he cannot quickly fix years of neglect, cronies, mismanagement, and greed. However, Shelby Township residents should not subsidize Detroit delinquency, incompetence, waste, and mismanagement. Many people have told me there have been complaints for years, and nothing has been done. And I agree with them. I do. But this was in the past. Now is the time to get involved and revisit this issue with the dangerous new proposal by Mr. Orr, suggesting, and please listen to this, that's the scary part, $9 billion over 40 years against Detroit Water and Sewer Customers. That's us. This would translate to over $200 million per year for 40 years period. Provide unrestricted revenue stream for Detroit, City of Detroit. This would be the biggest wealth distribution in the state of Michigan. The suburbs should not be an ATM machine for the city of Detroit. Mr. Orr is doing what he needs to do to balance Detroit's budget. My message to Mr. Orr is Detroit's budget should not be balanced on the backs of taxpayers of Shelby Township. That's my message to Mr. Orr. And I respect the gentleman a lot. The regional authority needs to be set up, not a regional distribution of wealth, where after a while, the suburbs become bankrupt, just like Detroit. I hope that this type of discussion is taking place in 126 communities, because that's how many Detroit Water Department services. 126 communities. Mainly suburban communities. The taxpayers need to be informed. They need to know what's coming our way, your way, my way. But there's more scary stuff. Other communities have begun looking for options. Genesee County Region is constructing a pipeline which will run 65 miles from Port Huron to Flint. Genesee County Region is scheduled to break off from Detroit Water Sewer by 2016. This will create a loss of 20% of revenues for Detroit. 250 customers and 25 million annually. What do you think will happen to the water rates? They're going to go up 20% because they have to make up the difference. Higher rates. And this is not my idea. This is Detroit News, October 7, 2013, the source. Possible potential solutions is, and we're going to talk about it, I've got some great folks here for you. We're going to tackle this issue head-on. If it's acceptable buyer to find a private buyer and sell and privatize the business. Mr. Shannon Price will address that issue. The second, is this possible solution? I'm not advocating that, but I'm just throwing that out. Construct a water tower, or many throughout the city, township. Hook up to Port Huron Genesee County System once it's operational, and renegotiate better contract with more input from suburbs. My suggestion would be this, and again, this is only my opinion. Nine-member board, set up regional authority with full partnership with Detroit Water and Sewer Department, consisting as follows. Two reps from each county, two representatives from each county. One appointed by County Executive, one appointed by Board of Commissioners from each county. Two representatives from Detroit, one appointed by the mayor, one appointed by City Council. There's hope in Detroit, because now, new mayor, new city council can have a fresh start. And one appointed by the Governor of Michigan. And I'm going to stop talking now. I'm going to ask our first presenter, is our DPW Director Acting, Acting Director Dave Miller. He's got some slides to show you what was happening in Shelby Township, and what we're going with this, and where we at right now. So, ladies and gentlemen, Dave Miller, Acting DPW Director.
Thank you, Mr. Groth. If we could put some slides up. As Mr. Groth said, I'm the Acting Director of Public Works, and I've been with the community for about 31 years now, all within the Water Department. Next slide, please. Pardon me when I look over my shoulder a little bit, just want to make sure in the same place. Here, we'd like to just take a little quick look at the system as a whole. Again, as Dan said, DWSD provides water to about 4 million people in 126 communities. They provide water that goes just about up to Flint, or used to go up to Flint, and virtually down to Monroe, out to Lake St. Clair, and as far west as Ypsilanti and Canton area. While Shelby Township supplies water to the 35 square miles, we have about 26,000 water customers, of which about 14,850 are also sewer customers. Next slide. Shelby Township purchases about 3 billion gallons of water annually from the city of Detroit. We've got six connections. The city of Detroit has a 36-inch water main that runs down 24-mile road. It has a 96-inch water main that runs down the orchard, Macomb Orchard Trail, and it's got a 24-inch water main on the southern side of the community. We've got six connections to the water system, which gives us a great redundancy. If we have an issue, if some of you know, we had a water main break on 24-mile road last year, that was a city of Detroit main break, but for the most part, we did not have any customers out of water. We also have three connections to the city of Detroit sanitary sewer system. All of the sewer that goes to Detroit goes to one plant down in the southeast part of Detroit. That's the Spring Wells Plant. Over 90% of the drinking water that comes to Shelby Township comes from Lake Huron. The city of Detroit has a plant that's up just north of Fort Grashit. So all of our water is, most of the water that comes into Shelby Township comes across 69 to Emily City, down Van Dyke, and then hits the Macomb Orchard Trail and shoots across to the 96. This is in about a 120-inch diameter pipe. So it travels quite a while to get to us. And again, Detroit sends all of its sanitary sewer down to Detroit. Next slide, please. Few of the ways that Detroit has an impact on Shelby Township is Detroit is our sole supplier for water and sewer service. There's no other water, there are some other water and sewer treatment plants around, but they're not big enough to take on Shelby Township as a customer. We currently are in a 30-year contract with the city of Detroit. That contract is open for renegotiation every five years, and in 2016, we'll get to our next re-opener. And then, last but not least, they are probably the major factor in the water and sewer rates that you as residents pay, in the Shelby Township rates. Currently, for 2013, the water rates that we get charged from the city of Detroit account for 75% of our total expenses for the department. So that's what makes up your rate. 75% of that is the water cost from the city of Detroit. Sewer cost is about 50%. Go to the next slide, please. In this graph, I'm going to indicate a difference in rate methodology. Prior to 2009, our ordinance indicated that whatever rate increase we got from the city of Detroit, we were to round up to the next whole number and pass that increase on to you as water and sewer customers. If you look at the top line for water, this will say, in 2014, the upcoming year, that rate would have been $5.216 per 100 cubic feet. In 2009, the Board of Trustees adopted what we call a true cost of service. That is, whatever our expenses are, that's what the cost is to the residents, to the ratepayers. In doing that, that takes, and you can see the middle line there, that reduced it from 5.216 to what we're going to be proposing to the board next week, $3.477 per 100 cubic feet. So you can see that the board has made a conscientious effort and some changes here to reduce those rates. Now, the bottom line is the cost of water. And there's one thing you can note with the cost of water. Unlike that second line up there that's kind of breaking even, the cost of water is continually Next slide, please. This graph will show a comparison between what we call the operating expenses of the department and the cost of the water itself as a part of the expense. In 2009, the total cost was $12,216,000 for the operation of the DPW for Shelby Township. 69% of that cost was water. 31% was the actual operating cost of the department, such as labor, depreciation, and just regular everyday operating expenses. If you look at 2014, those total expenses increased from $12.2 million up to $14.7 million. Now, if you look at the way that that chart shows, though, 76% of that total is now the cost of water. 24% is the cost of everyday operations of the department. So while the department has leaned itself in the last five years approximately a half a million dollars, again, the rates, at least the rates for sewer, will go up because of the cost of the treatment facilities. Next slide, please. What has the township done? In the last five years since 2008, the Board of Trustees have adopted the true cost of service rate methodology. Again, that means our rates are equal to whatever the actual costs are. There is no profit included in this and no markup. Again, it's solely the rates. These are based totally on the approved budget that gets presented to the Township Board. We've reduced the labor costs approximately a quarter of a million dollars over the last four years. In 2012, we paid off $9.1 million in long-term debt, saving the ratepayers $2 million in interest over the following 10, next 10 years. Also in 2012, we paid 4.8% in what's called an OMID payments. That's the Oakland-Macomb Interceptor District. It's a sanitary sewer district, and they've had bonds of $4.8 million. Through our reserves, we were able to prepay those bonds, again, saving the ratepayers $1.1 million in interest. The Township Board has put into effect a voluntary odd-even sprinkling ban, and we've put a comprehensive education program in place. And in 2011, we negotiated new demands for our contract with Detroit, which lowered and was able to maintain a lower rate with the city of Detroit. Just for a note, in paying off those bonds, Shelby Township DPW is virtually debt-free. The only debt that we owe is the debt on our building right now, which we can't pay off just because of the terms of the note. Can I have the last slide, please? This slide is pretty simple. It just shows from 2008 to the present, and including the proposal that'll go to the board on Tuesday at the Township Board Meeting. It shows the rates and how they've changed. The one thing that I'd like to bring to your attention is through the endeavors of the department, the management, the Township Board of Trustees, the rate, the water rate that we're going to be proposing to the board again on Tuesday, even though it's minimal, will be a 0.3% decrease over last year. So, we know that water costs are going to be going up, but the Shelby Township is doing everything they can do to keep those costs down through other means. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave Miller. Appreciate that presentation. And we're going to move on to our next presenter is actually representative right now, an individual who's representing our interest, the county interest, the way the structure is set up. We do have one representative right now from Macomb County, and he is Fred Barnes. He's a former Public Works Chief Engineer. He lives in Sterling Heights and was selected from over 30 people who apply for the Water Board position to represent Macomb County. Fred has overwhelming credentials and 40 years in field of engineering, coupled with inherent ability of probing into issues, which gives Macomb County a strong but fair voice on Detroit Water Board. An interesting note, West Point graduate, and he was advisor to the Republican Vietnam Army, to the Rangers, where he reached a rank of captain. Ladies and gentlemen, let's welcome Fred Barnes.
I work with Fazel Khan. Yesterday, Fazel called me up. I was on a job site. I was happy to get in my car and get a little bit warm for the discussion, and he asked me to come to, he told me it was a Township Board meeting. I didn't find out until this afternoon that it was an informational meeting about DWSD. I was appointed as a result of, primarily as a result of an order issued by Judge Cox, the federal judge who was controlling the EPA lawsuit, which was initiated in 1977 against DWSD in the city of Detroit and the state of Michigan and just about everybody else. That's the way the federal government does things. Judge Cox, in his order of February 2011, made a number of changes, one of which was that each of the county representatives would be selected by the county, and that's the representative that would serve. Previously, the county selected a number of individuals to put up to the mayor of Detroit, and the mayor actually made the appointment. So that's one of the changes that Judge Cox made. I've been on the board since April of 2011. I've spent a lot of time down in DWSD, going to meetings with various staff, going to some of the TAC meetings, which is part of our outreach program with our customers. I've learned a lot in, since April of 2011, I've got a lot more to learn. DWSD is a really large system, as indicated earlier, probably in the neighborhood of 4 million water customers, 3.2 million sewer customers. Some people don't know that it is, the wastewater treatment plant is the largest single-site wastewater treatment facility in North America. Other large cities have more than one treatment facility. Judge Cox further ordered in November of 2011, a number of things which gave the Board of Water Commissioners more control over DWSD and removed some of the controls from the city. He decreed that DWSD would be able to have and will have its own finance department separate from the city, its own human resources department separate from the city, and its own procurement department separate from the city, as well as its own legal department. Those changes have greatly facilitated improvements in the way DWSD has been able to conduct their business. No longer being held back by the city's HR and being able to actually go out and select the people that we need. At one time, it took nearly a year to get a contract approved from point of inception all the way through the Board of Water Commissioners up to City Council. And if one of the council members wanted a little more information, it would come back, and then when it went back after they've gotten that information, unfortunately, it didn't go back to where it left off, but it started the entire process again. And if there was an emergency, what are you going to do? You can't get a contract approved in less than a year. What are you going to do? So, it was, it was, it was a hard road a hole for the department. Now, we've gotten down to about 10 weeks for approval of a contract for supplies that we need or for services that we need. The ability to have these things more in-house without oversight from the city has also allowed us to make a lot of managerial decisions and organizational changes. We have been, this board has been very busy over the last two and a half years. We selected a new director, and Sue McCormick is superb. I've been very impressed with her ability to organize and communicate. We hired a company to come in and look at our organization and make recommendations for changes. And as is indicated, about 10 years ago, there were 4,000 employees. When I came in April 2011, we were around 2,000, and we're down around 1,600 now. The initial recommendation from the firm was in the 389 area. We're not going to get down that far. I don't believe. We're not going to sacrifice our ability to maintain compliance with our EPA permit, our NPDS permit. But we're going to be a lot slimmer than we were at 2,000 when I came in. It's going to require some additional cost over the next few years, because in order to get down, we're going to have to automate a number of things that we're doing essentially by hand now. As a result of the changes that have been made this last year, we were able to keep the hour rate increase, which needless to say, gets passed on to our customers, to 4%, which is the first time it's been under eight for about as long as anybody can remember. We anticipate that we will be able to maintain that rate increase henceforth, I think. The governance issue. The Board of Water Commissioners- The Board of Water Commissioners is in a position now of not being able to control its own destiny. Whether or not there's going to be an authority, or whether or not there's going to be a sale, or whether or not things are going to continue as they have, is, is not up to the Board of Water Commissioners. The Judge Cox again, moved back in 2000, I think about August, July or August 2011, created a Root Cause Committee, which consisted of a representative of the mayor's office, two representatives from the Detroit City Council, the president and President Protem, and the chairman of the Board of Water Commissioners. They released a study, a Root Cause Committee study, in which they recommended that an authority be created. When the bankruptcy became an issue in July, when Detroit filed for bankruptcy, anything that had been done previously is pretty much out of the window. The city does own the system. The city has, in essence, I think, the three options that I just mentioned. They can continue as is, they can sell, or they can create an authority, have an authority created which would separate us from the city. Going on as is is not a viable option at this time. I think everybody understands that. Selling, that's an option. I don't know that the city's going to take advantage of that. It is true that we, DWSD has about $6 billion in debt, but we are a debt-financed agency in order to, our entire capital improvement program, we create annually a budget. We determine what things that we need to do in order to modernize or bring up to current standards the various pieces of equipment, and that becomes our capital improvement budget, and then we go out and sell bonds. And the bonds, with the money with the bonds is what we do to buy the equipment and have the contracts necessary in order to install all the appliances and that sort of thing that are, that are needed in order to operate. The problem with a sale, I think, is we introduced, we, that would introduce a profit motive. Currently, it's an enterprise utility. It's, has always been. Our finances have been separated from the city as, because we're an enterprise utility. We don't go into their general fund at all. But to create a profit, something will have to change somewhere, and typically, the way they create profit is by increasing rates. That's what's happened in almost all the cities where they've made this sort of sale of utilities. So, the authority seems to be the best method of moving forward. As I said, the Board of Water Commissioners has no say in what happens. The only people that have a say in what happens right now are the emergency financial manager and the three counties. We anticipate that probably the three counties will step forward with their Boards of Commissioners and create an authority. Just exactly how that authority is governed, governed, again, the current Board of Water Commissioners has no say. It'll be a matter of negotiation between the three, between the three counties and the emergency manager. Those discussions are ongoing. We're not included. I can tell you that I've been told that in the recent meetings, there are about fifty people in the room, 92% of which are attorneys from the various counties and from, from the emergency manager's office. We've been told that they were going to have a deal done by December 31st. I'm not sure I can see that happening, but hey, could happen. I will be available as we continue for questions, if anyone has any.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Again, thank you very much, Mr. Barnes, for your presentation. Again, I want to stress the point that this is not suburbs against Detroit. This is what's fair and what's for, what's good for us in Shelby Township. Past examples of corruptions, I'll give you a best example. Fifteen Mile and Hayes. Remember that sink hall? They shut down that area for months. That particular break was repaired three times. It costed how many? $55 million? Originally, it was $31 million, and then the overruns and everything else costing another $22 million that nobody knows where their money went. Now, we know what happened there, and we know where the mayor is, former mayor is, but that's what was happening. Just today, I picked this up before I came here. This was Metro and State Detroit News. And let me just read you, it's, it's a good read. I recommend, pick up Detroit, Detroit News tomorrow. It says Detroit's water drains away from ravaged pipes. No one knows how long the water has flowed through moldy balls of massive buildings a few miles north of downtown. In this, they're talking about Crossman School, which was, which been closed since 2007. It's an empty structure. And there's some comments here. The water was running all last winter. You can actually hear it running. Sometimes the water can run for years. That's another person comment. The city officials have no idea how much water is being lost in Detroit. The water was wasted on the front end, and second is, we end up having to treat the water. So, we pay, they, we paying twice. Again, delinquency, mismanagement is costing us a fortune here, and we're picking up the tab, and we have no, we, we had no input in all this. We're going to hear from Wayne County individual, who is a good friend of mine from, we used to work for Attorney General's Office together. Now, he's Wayne County Commissioner, and also, he's a member of Water Board Task Force. He's a chairman, actually. And maybe he'll tell us a little bit more what he's doing, what his function is, but I, I want to thank him for his bravery to come out and visit with us, but we're good friends from way back. So, thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. Shannon Price.
Thank you, Stan. Appreciate it. My name's Shannon Price. I'm recently elected to the Wayne County Board of Commissioners. Last year, I got elected, started this year. That's the bad news. Good news, I haven't been indicted yet. Kidding.
This is live, Neil.
I know, it's live. It's a bad joke. It's a bad joke. Just so you guys know, in Wayne County, we have fifteen commissioners that serve. My district is 100, I represent Western Wayne County, the townships of Canton Township, Plymouth Township, and the city of Plymouth. It's about 100, it's 126,800 people. So, we have larger districts than most counties. The Sid Barnes picked up, the, the good thing about going last is you know what everybody said, and the bad thing is a lot of them pick off a lot of the things you were going to say. Some of it'll be a little redundant. Sid talked about how Judge Cox, I'll give you a little thing on DWSD and kind of where we were and kind of where we're going. Judge Cox took over a longstanding lawsuit from Judge Fikens and created this new Water Board Commission with five new members, and in that commission, each of them have to have seven years of experience in, in a given field, whether it's industry, utility, engineering, finance, or law. So, now, we have a good representative from Macomb who has good experience. They don't get paid a lot. He talked a lot about all the stuff he does. He doesn't get paid a lot. He only gets $250 per meeting. So, it's a lot of work for what they do. The, the debt of DWSD has been documented today. I don't need to talk about what they're doing. So, we talk about, there was this order from Judge Cox and the idea from the new Board of Com, Water Commissioners, that they wanted to create an authority, and that was out there and floating around, and the chair of that Board of Commissioners is a man by the name of Jim Fassone. He's the Wayne County Representative, is a good friend of mine. And when Detroit went into bankruptcy, they have a lot of debt in Detroit. And one thing Sid touched on with DWSD, and you should know, is it's an enterprise fund, and he touched on enterprise fund, and I, I want to go back to it, because I don't, I just want to make sure everybody understands what that means. That means that all the money stays with DWSD. There was no money going over to the city of Detroit. So, when you think of, oh, boy, they were fleecing the suburbs to pay off the former Maricuamis, political friends, and all of his cronies, while that's true, but it's not totally true. It's not like it was all going into the city. What he was doing is he was sending contracts over to DWSD and hiring people at DWSD, and that's where all the corruption at DWSD came from. It wasn't money getting moved from DWSD over to the city. Now, that all got cleaned up when Sid and the five other members got there, and that all got cleaned up. Am I fair enough to say that, Sid? All right, sorry. So, brings us to Detroit and their bankruptcy, and Kevin Orr has to find revenue to pay off their debt, and he needs to find a revenue stream. So, if he keeps, Sid touched on this as well, if he keeps DWSD as it is, he doesn't, he does not have a revenue stream to help pay off the bondholders and the debtors of the city of Detroit. If he creates an authority in, you want to tell them I said hi? I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I'm kidding. By the way, I've done that, it's really, anyway, but if he creates an authority, and this new authority could then lease DWSD from the city of Detroit, and that would create a revenue stream for the city of Detroit, and they could use that revenue on an annual basis to pay off the debt and the bondholders. And that's kind of where, or he could sell it to, to a private entity, somebody from China or wherever, anywhere around the world could come in and buy it. Now, no, if he creates an authority, this is, this is important, too. We learned this at the county right away. It only takes two people to create an authority. So, there was some talk of, well, we just won't be part of that authority. Well, you know, if Wayne County decided they did not want to be part of an authority, Oakland and Macomb County could create the authority, or Oakland and Wayne could create the authority. And the idea at the time was, well, if you're not part of the authority, you're not sitting at the table setting rates, and, and if you're not part of the authority, you could have a higher rate than those that are part of the authority. So, and, and I tell you that, because this is how it came to us in the county commission of, hey, do you want to approve this agreement to, with the three counties to enter into an agreement, a memorandum of understanding, to assess the value of DWSD? And if you don't jump in board now, you won't be part of this authority, and Wayne County residents, in our case, could be paying higher rates. And Oakland and Macomb had already signed on. So, so we signed on, and that's, we're in the middle of trying to assess that value to see if, moving forward, because we want to see it at the table. I mean, and being in Western Wayne County a lot, like you guys over here in Shelby Township, we all want more representation on the Detroit Water Board. We think that Detroit's been raising rates on us way too, you know, our rates have been way too high, and we pay way too much money in water, and, you know, if I was standing in my community, we'd all raise our hands to that, you know, we're paying way too much. So, more representation we can get is, is better. So, when we knew that this was coming, I went to our chairman, Gary Warrenchuck, asked him to form a task force to oversee the negotiations from our standpoint on the county from Bob Ficano, because we have so much trust in him, on the commission, that we wanted to have some oversight, and the chair agreed, and, and we started on this road, and one of our first presenters was Jim Fassone from the Board of Water Commissioners. And Jim came in and said that they talked about doing their own authority, you know, turn it over to an authority before, and he believed that the annual lease payment to the city of Detroit would be somewhere around $50 million a year. And he didn't have a timeframe on that, but that was kind of the going number, and I know that in the three counties that when they're negotiating, that's been the number that's been kicked around, right? I mean, as a baseline number, if you will, kind of a ballpark number. It was about a month ago, Kevin Orr spokesman came out and said that they believed that the value was going to be $9 billion, and, which would have been an annual payment of $90 million a year, which, let me back up. When he said $50 million, I think they were assessing the value, and Sid, you can correct me if I'm wrong, between three to five billion for everything in DWSD, and I might be off on my number, but is that about?
I'm not sure exactly.
I'm saying, that's the number Fassone gave me. That's not the UHY one that we're paying for everybody to come back. This was this initial number, which came out to the $50 million. Anyway, Kevin Orr came in at $9 billion with $90 million a year, his spokesman did, and I think my answer was, he's crazy, and he's not going to fleece the taxpayers of the suburbs to balance Detroit's books. Brooks, over in Oakland County, had a more colorful answer that they had to bleep out on the radio, and it started with the letter F, and it ended with them. So, you can figure that out. Now, Kevin Orr has implemented a December 20th deadline, all right? So, we knew going into this in the, in Wayne County, that Kevin Orr's goal has always been to be done with his bankruptcy plan by the end of the year, and it's becoming more and more clear that this lease agreement and this new authority for water is a major component of his bankruptcy plan, because he needs revenue coming in to pay off the debtors. And he wanted to make sure he had this done by the end of the year. And there was an article in the, in the news last week, it said he has a self-imposed December 20th deadline, and he's hoping to get letters of intent to move into this new authority from the three county executives by December 20th, meaning Mark Hackle, Al Brooks Patterson, and Bob Ficano. I'll tell you, in talking to our county and talking to people in Oakland County, we're miles apart on a deal. There is no way we're going to pay $9 billion for, for DWSD or $90 million a year. I don't, I haven't met anyone yet that thinks that's a good idea, and if you want to know kind of where that's coming from, you can pull up, there's a group called Buckfire, who's doing the negotiation for the city, and it's one of Kevin Orr's consultant firms. And they put an, an addenda on their contract that says that they get .75% of the aggregate of what they can value DWSD at, okay? And they can get the authority to pay. So, when you hear the people from Buckfire coming out going, it's worth $9 billion, that's because, you know, they're, they're worried about their own pocket and not ours. So, know that we're on that constant fight every day. I will tell you that as of last week, we didn't think, we thought this was kind of a dead deal and wasn't going to go anywhere, and they sent over a term sheet back in November. The three counties rejected it. They sent over a new term sheet last week, which was rejected, but they met today. And I don't know the results of that meeting, I wish I could tell you, but some highlights I can give of the term sheet they gave last week, some was good, some was bad. Stan, Stan Clark Rout touched on it. There would be two representatives from each, each county, Wayne, Oakland, and Macomb, and three from the city of Detroit. Now, who appoints those hasn't been made clear yet. I can tell you, representing Wayne County and being on the Wayne County Commission, we have said, made it very clear to the executive office, to Bob Ficano's office, that we want to keep the seven years of experience, that you have to have seven years of experience. We think that it's worked out really good in having, basically, you want to make sure that you just don't get political crony appointments, that you get friends, you know, people on there know nothing about water and sewer, but they get a good political job, you know? We want to make sure that the commission on our side gets to sign off on those, and that's big for us. I know that there, there is a talk that there would be a super majority on all capital expenditures. That's kind of up in the air. If you look at the Cobal Hall Authority, there, you need super, super majority for expenditure. If you look at the Cobal Hall Authority, you need super majority for expenditures, in this case, would be for rate increases. We think that's a good idea. So that's floating around. There's a thing that says rates should increase every year during the lease. We don't necessarily agree with that in Wayne County. We kind of think that we should, that should be on a, every year you assess what's going on. It shouldn't just be built in that we're going to increase rates every year. And again, that goes back because Buckfire wants to keep that value. When they said $90 million a year, it was $90 million a year for the first 10 years, and then it was going to increase every year for the next 20 years. That was their lease agreement. So know that they're trying to cover themselves, but there is not a lot out there on where we're at. I mean, there's a lot of confidential stuff going around, but know that we're miles apart, and there's no way we're going to hit this December 20th deadline. I mean, I think that is, speaking from a commission, our next, our last meeting is next Thursday, so we'll be done. And then if you look at Kevin Orr's other option, and I know, Stan, you had this question, I don't want to step on it, the other option would be to privatize it and sell it to a private company.
Why should I talk?
What, I'm talking right now?
Yes, please.
In talking to some friends in Oakland County, I think going to a third party is becoming more and more unlikely, because if they sell it, you got six, was it $6 million of debt, or $6 billion of debt, six or seven billion, plus $800 million in bonds, and you'd have to pay all that off upfront, right? Now, look, I mean, the concern for us, when we started this, was, oh, my God, if they'd sell this to a private company, they can double your rates tomorrow because they're in it for profit. They're not in it to make sure that, you know, we're all getting a good deal, and they're balancing the books and just make, you know, covering costs. They'd be in it to make a profit. So there's that concern. But when you look at that, the bonds would become due, and you'd have to pay off the debt and pay off the bonds, it becomes a much bigger lift, if you will. There's also legislation in Lansing that could potentially require any third party that purchased DWSD to have to go to the Public Service Commission to get the Public Service Commission's approval for a rate increase. And if, for example, on that, is if DTE wants to raise your electricity rates, or MichCon wants, or consumers, I'm not sure who you have, wants to raise your gas rate, they have to go before the Public Service Commission in Lansing and make a case on why they're going to raise your rates. Well, there is legislation in Lansing that could potentially force DWSD or whoever buy that commodity to have to go to the Public Service Commission for a rate increase, which would be a deterrent for a private investor to come in and want to buy that, because they're going to want to double a rate, and if they know they have to go to the Michigan Public Service Commission, that's going to be a tough, tough task ahead of them. So I think we have more leverage than we had a month ago. I know that in Wayne County, we want to get the deal done, we want more representation, but we want to do it at a fair rate. And hopefully, God willing, we'll get there. But I feel more comfortable that we got Bob Daddo from Oakland County. I'm a Wayne County guy, so I always look to you guys up north to help us out. But I know Bob Daddo is good with numbers, and he's been fighting hard, and so has your, you know, your Drain Commissioner in Morocco and Mark Hackle has been fighting hard to try to keep this all together. But you'll hear more about it in the next two weeks, I'll tell you that, because there's going to be a big push to try to get it done. Because again, Kevin Orr wants to have this all, he wants to have his whole bankruptcy plan done and put together in the beginning of 2014 and submit it to the court. His goal is to have, by March, have the bankruptcy plan approved and kind of on cruise control so he can start turning things over.
He'll be back with your questions.
Yeah, but that's kind of where we're at.
Yeah, we'll take questions.
All right. Thanks, Stan. Thank you, guys.
We'll take questions in a minute. Thank you, Shannon. Thank you for that great presentation, opposite point of view from Wayne County. We appreciate that. We're almost at the end, and we'll adjourn in a minute, and then we'll take questions. But let me, let me close with this. The time is very crucial for us to address this issue since decision made by emergency manager Kevin Orr will affect the suburbs for years to come, will affect us, the taxpayers, the water users. We must work together to unite under one common goal, to break up the Detroit monopoly. There's no other way. We need the voice at the table. We need the fair and equal representation. At the table were decisions are made affecting us for years to come. I know that this is extremely controversial and delicate issue, and I know I'll be criticized, I already have been, for taking a stand. But I never been afraid to stand up for what I believe in, and I always tell the truth. And I want you to call me. I want you to communicate with me, and I invite you to join me in this fight, because I stand with you. I'm a taxpayer, and I'm also paying high water rate. I want to thank the media for publicizing this event, this meeting, Shelby Cable, Macomb Bailey, and Channel 4, believe it or not. They did a story this afternoon on their webpage. What can we do now, because I know, we're going to open up questions in a minute, but what I would suggest, you know the facts. They, some of them is good, some of them is bad, but some of that is scary stuff. And I would ask you to continue to monitor what's going on, watch the events taking place, and call your representative, call a Macomb County executive, call Board of Commissioners, your board members, call state representatives, and don't stop there. Call the governor. And please come to the meetings. I know the meetings sometimes are long and different, the board meetings, but we want you to come up to our meetings and let us know, let the elected officials know what's going on out there. I know one lady called me yesterday, since this was put out and publicized. She's paying $1,100 for water bill, and just a little average home with four people in a house. The next person, just down the road from me, $800. Got two teenage daughters and just two of those people. It's incredible what's going on. And again, please keep the faith. We are elected, we are representing you, and you got my word on it, I will stand up, I will not back down. I'm more than a clerk. I'm also a voting member on this board, Board of Trustees, and I do have a vote at the table. And decisions are made at this board, Board of Trustees. I give up a good job with Attorney General. I came here to help. I was making more money there than I'm making here. But my family's here, I care about this community, and I'm going to continue to do what's right, and I hope you stand with me. Thank you. That concludes the official session of this presentation. We're going to open up for questions, and I'm sure there are some. And please address to specific person.